Gather tonight to conduct the business of the city. We're grateful, especially in recent times of the blessing that we have of freedom and that we are very blessed to be in this community. We ask thee to please be with us tonight, help us to have wisdom, help us to have discernment, and to make good and proper decisions for the matters that we're considering tonight. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge the citizens to the flag of the United States of America to repose our borders on one nation under God, indivisible, with the reverence and honor of our God.
Okay, the next item on our agenda I am excited about. So, we have had a little bit of a change in the leadership of the Miss Syracuse pageant, and they would like to begin using an oath of office for our queens. So, we're very excited to be able to do that. Tonight, we have our Miss Syracuse and Miss Teen Syracuse here. If you two would step forward, I'm going to use this mic, sorry. Alright, so this is what, and I want to just say what, to be clear, this was a request from the pageant that they administer this oath, and just kind of remind the ladies of, you got yourself into this, so good luck. If you would raise your hand, your right hand, and then repeat after me. I state your name, promise to uphold the title of to represent the city, or to represent Syracuse City to the best of my abilities, and with this title, I commit myself to making a difference through service and leadership. I will strive to demonstrate excellence in my personal character. Demonstrate. I will seek to elevate those around me, and I will carry the responsibility of this title with pride, purpose, and heart. This is my promise and my commitment to Syracuse City. Thank you, ladies. And I will just say this one word because I've been, or one bit, because I'm really excited about this group of ladies. I actually noticed at Heritage Days, people that had approached you girls, and you were so wonderful. You do lift up others around you, and you do exemplify the character of the city and remember to carry it with you. So, thank you so much, both of you. You are outstanding representatives, and I'm really looking forward to this year. And now, we're going to move on to our next part of the meeting, which is public comment. This is a chance for anyone to come forward and make a comment. This can be something that you'd like us to be aware of, to look into at a future meeting, or this could be something that you would like to comment on that is not open for a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment? Come forward. As you come to the mic, please state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Mark Johnson. I am at 1167 Porch in Miller's Island.
Okay.
Sorry, can we take a quick time?
Yeah, take a timeout. We didn't turn that mic around, sorry. Last meeting. Okay, go ahead, sir.
I guess people can't hear me in the back. Alright. So, I'm here today specifically to address, I know that there's a later discussion about park fees. I know that on the 22nd, we have additional discussions around commercial use within parks and fees associated with that. My comment specifically addresses fees for businesses operating within our park and understand the need for appropriate fee schedules. I would urge the council to include a de minimis exception in the new fee schedules for small and intermittent child-run enterprises like lemonade stands and small craft stores within our city parks. This isn't about, this isn't just about fostering youth entrepreneurialship. It's about aligning our local ordinances with state law, Utah Code, Title 10, Chapter 1, Section 30203, known as the Utah Young Entrepreneurial Act explicitly prohibits municipalities from requiring a license, a fee, or a permit for any minor seeking to engage in a casual business or enterprise. This state law defines a casual business as infrequent and not engaged in primary occupation and conducted by a minor. A child's lemonade stand in a park perfectly fits this description. I am aware that on the 22nd, we do have a working session regarding commercial activities within parks, and the de minimis exception for children's businesses is distinct from the larger commercial discussions planned for that session. This is about supporting our youngest residents in the initial steps towards entrepreneurship in full compliance with state statutes. By incorporating the de minimis exception, Syracuse City would be empowering our young entrepreneurs to ensure our local regulations are in direct compliance with state law without burdening young residents within the city with unnecessary bureaucracy. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Hey, thank you. I will state for the record that we don't require that at this time. We don't require a license for a lemonade stand. We're talking about permanent businesses or year-round leases.
So, the, there is some confusion then amongst multiple entities within the city that should be clarified and aligned. Two weekends ago, my nephew back there, and my daughter, who wasn't here today, were selling lemonade in a park, and were stopped by a Parks and Recreation employee. The police department was contacted. We were notified that that was not something that was allowed within the parks because the Syracuse City Park
City property, yeah.
Specifically prohibits without a permit or a license, which isn't required for young children with lemonade stands.
Yeah, if you do that on your own personal property, you're free, but this is not a discussion item, so I'm going to have to cut this off. But you're free to do those things on your own property.
Yes, that was the encouragement to adopt the resolution at some point to include a de minimis exception within the city park fee schedule to allow children to sell in a park.
Okay. We'll get back to that at a future meeting. Next, we have the approval of minutes. We have meeting minutes from June 10th, the Syracuse City Regular Business Meeting, June 10th, the special RDA meeting, June 10th, the Municipal Building Authority Meeting, and June 24th, the work session. Do I have any amendments to those? If not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes as outlined in the agenda.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the items on our consent agenda. Consent agenda are items that we have all worked on in multiple meetings, or at least a work session, and agreed to move forward. We have Item A, Award Contract for Municipal Electrical Work. Item B, Award Contract for Design of a Roundabout Located Approximately 3,000 and 1,900 South. And Item C, Proposed Resolution R25-29 Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Inter-local Agreement with North Davis Metro SWAT Team. Are there any of those items anyone would like to pull off consent? Seeing none, can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number six is Proposed Resolution R25-30, Appointing Kelly Nielsen to the Syracuse City Planning Commission. This is to fulfill a vacated seat. One of our planning commissioners received a conflicting call that he's accepted with the Syracuse Temple. So, this would to fill the remaining term of that seat. Can I get a motion?
I move that we accept Proposed Resolution R25-30 Appointing Kelly Nielsen to the Syracuse City Planning Commission.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven is Proposed Resolution, or Proposed Ordinance 25-30, Amending Syracuse Municipal Code Sections 10.82.30(c) and 10.30.20(e) Pertaining to Accessory Dwelling Units. I think we've talked about this one, but is there anything new that we need to be aware of? There is nothing new since our last discussion. Counsel, do you have any further discussion on this? If not, I will take a motion.
I move that we approve Proposed Ordinance 25-30, Amending the Syracuse Municipal Code Section as outlined in the agenda pertaining to accessory dwelling units.
Second?
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That also passes unanimously. Item eight is a public hearing. The public hearing is for Proposed Resolution R25-31, Amending the Syracuse City Consolidated Fee Schedule Pertaining to Noise Ordinance Violations, Park and Trail Violation Fees, and Working Without a Permit Fee. These are all penalty fees that have come into question. Is there anything new that we should know about this, Steve?
Yeah, the item in red was added since our last work session discussion. We have quite a few builders doing work without permits. The violation currently is $100. We're proposing to increase that to $500 on the first offense, $1,000 on any subsequent offense.
Okay, I can see why that would make a lot of sense. Any discussion from the council on that?
So, my only question on that one where we're just seeing it now is, so what, what type of, does it, does it define what type of building permit? Is it for a specific type of permit, or?
It could be any, any, any work that's required to have a permit would fall under this category. A lot of it is building and construction. And what we're seeing is work has started, or work commences before they actually even get the permit finalized.
So, are we talking about projects, or are we talking about small construction home improvements?
We're talking about more projects, like new home builds.
Whole home builds that don't have a permit yet.
Correct.
But at the same time, you can get, that's what we're talking about now, but in five years, when this is looked at, and people are like, oh, you don't have a permit for that. $500 is pretty steep if someone that's just putting in a hot water heater gets slapped for not getting a permit for it. I think the $100 for the first offense and 500 for a second makes sense, but not just hitting a $500 fine right off the, unless they got a warning, unless there was a warning involved in it that's written into the code that they must receive a warning first. I don't know, I think that's pretty steep.
And one thought is, you could, you could break this down by commercial and residential, or like business versus individual, if you really wanted to.
That makes sense.
Could we also break it down for home improvement versus new construction?
Yeah.
Because I think
Yeah, that would be more fair. Like, I would hit a construction company with a $500 fine, but not someone just
I don't want somebody
I agree.
Yeah, a water heater that didn't pull a permit.
$500, yeah, exactly.
It's silly.
Yeah.
Not need a permit for a water heater, but I get the point, so.
Yeah, this is definitely geared more towards the developer.
For a water heater, yeah, you do, and they got after it goes in.
Oh, so, so
I've seen Mr. Kim a couple times for that reason.
Before, I would want to include this, I would want to take a closer look at it, what it applies to, and what we're even looking or requiring a permit on.
That's a big jump.
That's just my two cents.
I agree.
Okay.
Not often, but I do this time.
Okay, so, what I'm hearing is you'd like to pull out the amendment in red text. Are we okay with the rest of it? And we can hear the rest of the, and the red text at a future work session?
I'm okay with the rest of it because we previously discussed it.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion as such? Oh, wait a minute, I'm gonna have to open a public hearing first. So, I'm gonna open public hearing if there's anyone here to comment on permits. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Now, we can take a motion.
I move that we accept Proposed Resolution R25-31, Amending the Syracuse City Consolidated Fee Schedule Pertaining to Noise Ordinance Violation Fee, Park and Trail Violation Fee, but excluding the working without a permit fee listed in red.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, note for future agenda, at the July work session, we will talk about what working without a permit fee would mean and what requires a permit. I want to expand that to what requires a permit and what doesn't, because I think some basic home improvement projects probably shouldn't require a permit, but I think the, I thought the general rule was whether it had to be inspected.
We should maybe have the fire marshal here for that also.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Because I feel like that's the conversation that he needs to be involved with.
And reconnecting gas.
Anything, yeah.
Anything that has to be inspected.
And maybe Mr. Kim, he probably knows, he's the one that shows up for that.
Okay. But that, let's schedule that for the July work session. Item number nine, Authorize Administration to Dispose of Surplus Property. What's our surplus property on this, Steve, for the public?
This is the portable stage in the park correct department and the wooden gingerbread cutouts.
Jordan's Happy Christmas cutouts.
Okay, so we've talked about this in work meeting. Does anybody have any further discussion about these items?
Well, we gotta buy you those, dude.
Okay, so with no further discussion, can I get a motion?
I motion that we authorize administration to dispose of surplus property.
Second?
Motion made in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Jordan!
Alright, that passes. Item number 10, Proposed Resolution R25-32, Authorizing Execution of Cooperative Agreement with UDOT for Maintenance of Trail and Associated Lighting Along the West Davis Corridor. We have had months of discussion on this, and it appears to be resolved. Does anyone have any further discussion on this item?
I'm interested to know the increased cost, just so we have a record of that.
Okay, does the, do we have any record of the increased cost?
Yeah, in the memo on the third page, there is the breakdown of some estimated cost on, on the West Davis Corridor, both locations. It looks like approximately $10,000 to $20,000 per year, six to 10 hours per week.
Okay, does that answer your question?
And can that be handled with existing staff?
That's a good question.
Okay, I'm gonna call up Cresta and Robert. The question is, can we handle this work with the existing staff?
Yeah, this would primarily be park and rec.
Yeah.
You
Okay.
I don't feel like that's fair. I don't, I don't feel like that answer's fair for your staff.
Okay. Alright, so, any other questions about this?
I mean, this was the same discussion we had earlier.
Yes.
If we don't accept it, then it's not going to be taken care of and maintained by UDOT either, and so we're kind of left without a choice.
Yeah. And I'm sure that this and other changes will impact future staffing at some point. It's not on the agenda tonight. So, with that discussion, can I get a motion?
A motion that we approve Proposed Resolution R25-32, Authorizing Execution of Cooperative Agreement with UDOT for Maintenance of Trail and Associated Lighting Along the West Davis Corridor.
Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay, we do have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion does pass. Item number 11 is Proposed Resolution R25-33, Authorizing Execution of Master Landscape Maintenance Agreement with UDOT to Maintain Landscaping on West Davis Corridor. Again, this is another item that has been through several meetings of discussion. Are there any questions regarding this?
Other item we don't have the people for?
I have the same questions, just cost and staffing.
Yeah, this one's a little bit more time intensive with the trail, the overpass, the new connection, the tunnels. The estimated cost is between $40,000 and $50,000, or seven to 13 hours per week. Yeah, it's in the packet on that, that one as well, on the third page.
And is the staffing issue the same? You're just going?
Yeah, the, I mean, we, we're pretty short-staffed in the Parks and Rec Department currently. Taking on this is a, is a new, a new burden and a new set of responsibilities. I, I believe with this, along with the new regional park that's coming online next year, we're going to be asking for at least two, maybe three park maintenance workers to handle all these new, new duties and responsibilities.
Agree.
I feel like that's very reasonable.
Okay. Is anyone ready to make a motion on this proposed item?
Just, just prior to making the motion, I just want it made clear, I understand that we are kind of forced into a corner with this. I think there's been some issues raised that this council has been presumptively looking at raising taxes in order to get this done, which isn't appropriate at this time. I think that it is important that we start looking at how we're going to get these situations taken care of and cured sooner rather than later, and those are issues that need to be addressed. So, I don't have a choice, I feel, but to vote for this, but I do think that we need to start looking at how these staff increases and additional work is going to be paid for, rather than waiting until next year. Again, I'm not saying that we should raise taxes, I'm saying we should start looking at different options.
Agree. That's, that's probably one of my primary concerns. I, I agree with the principle of, of taking care of this land. I think we will do a better job, it'll be more beneficial to our city, but I am very concerned about the city's staff that will, that are overtaxed as is, and are now going to need to do a little bit more. So, we need to work through that.
I want to echo that also. I've spent time in each of these departments and visited with our city staff, and I see how much that, how much load is on them, and it's excessive. But in, in the Parks Department, it's the most excessive. So, by adding these two things and not considering staff, it's unreasonable for them.
I'm equally concerned that a state agency such as UDOT can just dump these responsibilities on small cities.
Yeah, I mean, look what the paramedic program did do.
That don't have the resources to deal with it, and were left with no choice and no funding from the state.
The state does it often, and like the, the meters that we're putting in now.
I understand that.
Yeah, doesn't make it right.
Change my concern.
Valid concern.
Yep.
Did, did we ever get any closure on what the state's position was with that, Colin?
Lee and Ella spoke with, Lee and Ella is our code enforcement officer. She spoke with someone at UDOT who said that they would have their attorney general call me and straighten me out, and I've never heard from anyone. So, the answer is, we know our position, but we don't know theirs.
So, counsel, what would you like to do?
I don't see any choice but to approve this. Again, I do think that it would serve this council well to start considering as these issues come up, how we're going to pay for it. I also think it would be wise to look into what the state attorney general's position is, and whether there's any recourse that the city has in a circumstance like this. Somebody needs to stand up.
Want to make that via motion?
Sure.
Second.
I'm not sure that
Yeah, I, I don't know that that
Can't work that.
That doesn't work as a motion.
I, I think you could word it in such a way that it says, for example, I move that we approve Resolution R25-33, authorizing, that's when we're on, right?
Yes.
Execution of the Master Landscape Maintenance Agreement with UDOT for Maintenance of the Landscape of West Davis Corridor. But in addition to that, also working to continue looking into, first of all, what the state position is on this, and look at how we can better manage this within our own city and Parks and Rec Department.
Second.
Very nice.
A motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12, Authorize Mayor Mon to Execute Real Estate Purchase Contracts for Two Properties Located at 500 West, 3700 South, Land Serial Numbers Any discussion on this, counsel?
Did I see on one of them, they were offering zero, or is that just for right of way?
One is underneath the road, I believe, so there's really no value. The other one is the easement through the fields, and that was the one that's, I think, $80,000 or so. I can't remember the exact amount.
Like $76,000.
Yep.
Any discussion, counsel?
Oh, if you can remind me, these are with Nature Conservancy. I'm, I'm a little confused on what the need for some of this stuff is.
Steve?
Correct, I believe they are. This is the easement that allows them to, to deliver water down to the Nature Conservancy. So, this is going through our property, but we're basically granting them that easement. They're paying that, for that easement.
They're paying, is it, that's the zero dollars?
The $76,000 is through the fields, south of the field subdivision to 3700 or Gentile, and there's a small portion underneath Gentile Road that they, they're saying it isn't worth any value.
So
So, it's where it's at, is where all the excess irrigation water runs off at, and it goes to a pipe that goes underneath the road, and it empties out into the wetland. So, that pipe that they, and the, where the water runs through is what the easement is.
Is there any way, I, I know we've been trying to work with the Conservancy District to build a trail that goes along this area. I think we call it the Great Salt Lake.
Shoreline Trail.
Shoreline Trail. Is there any way we can work with them as part of this to, to get access to some of that land?
I, I can, I can respond a little bit to that, because we've, we've worked in, in years past, you are correct. Well, first of all, UDOT needs this more than the Nature Conservancy does. So, the water needs to get to the Nature Conservancy District land. They don't care how it gets there. So, this is, this is for UDOT to get their water that they need to get to the, the wetlands. So, there's really no bargaining with, with the Nature Conservancy on this deal. It's really UDOT that needs it, not the Nature Conservancy.
The Nature Conservancy is pretty set against running a trail down through there because of the cattle in the privately owned land that is adjacent to it. That wraps up around over to the Diamond Property over by the entrance channel by land. So, between there and Kay'sville, or the Bird Sanctuary over there, it's, it's from their point, from what I understand, it's a no-go on that.
And, and yeah, some background, this is all part of the West Davis Corridor deal with wetland mitigation that UDOT did from the whole corridor all the way down to, down to Farmington. So, they, as part of this, they have to get a certain amount of water to the wetlands, and to get the water that they have down to the wetlands, this is their preferred route.
Okay, that's fine.
Just so you're aware, also, it references 500 West. I believe that's in here. I, I do believe it's 2550 West in Gentile. Just so, we'll, we'll clarify that before we execute this agreement with UDOT. Just so we're, we'll, we'll clarify that before we execute this agreement with UDOT.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I motion to authorize Mayor Mon to execute real estate purchase contracts for two properties located at approximately, approximately five hundred slash twenty-five hundred. Thirty-seven hundred south and.
As listed.
As listed.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimous. Item thirteen, authorize administration to award contract for Antelope Drive Phase One Trail. Is there anything we need to know about this one? Robert?
So yeah, there is a master plan to run a trail along Antelope Drive, South Side Antelope Drive between the West Davis Corridor Trail System and the Causeway Gatehouse. So we're taking this section as first phase because we're coupling it with a need to close thirty-three hundred west road at Antelope in order to accommodate a future road connection with the Costco development. In, yeah, so it saves some money to close the road and, and put a trail in. So it's basically widening that sidewalk out to ten foot wide. While we're there working, there is a very small culinary water main. We figure if we, it should be a good time to upsize that main. I think it's like an eight inch right now. It should be more like a twelve. So that'll better serve the residents in that area and we'll add some fire hydrants to, to help with any potential fire emergencies, so. All right, that's what this project is. Everything is within budget.
Counsel, is there any discussion?
I'm super stoked about this trail. This trail is going to be a great addition to the community. So seeing another, another part of it being completed is just awesome.
Would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I would like to move that we authorize administration to award contract to.
Leon Polson.
Leon Polson for the Antelope Drive Trail Phase One.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Forward to the water pressure.
Item number fourteen, authorize administration to award contract to Syracuse, or for Syracuse Reservoir West Branch Gravity Irrigation Supply. Robert?
Okay, this is the new reservoir that we have. We do have two pumps that are scheduled to be online by the end of August. They were ordered like last year. It takes time to get the pumps here. Parts are starting to come in. But with those two additional pumps, we'll have four total pumps pumping water out of the reservoir. We know we'll need more sources coming into it. It was planned already in our master plan and this would just finish that up. So everything fall, well, the, it mostly falls within budget. There is a little overage on it, but it is coming out of secondary impact fees, which growth is just paying for it. So what we would end up doing is just coming forward in the next budget opening and moving money over from that fund into this budget.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? Nope. Can I get a motion?
I move that we authorize administration to award the contract for Syracuse Reservoir West Branch Gravity Irrigation Supply to, was it Leon Polson again?
Leon Polson.
Leon Polson Construction.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we're to item fifteen, which is our second period of public comment. If anyone would like to bring an item forward that we'd like to talk about on a future agenda. Identify your, come forward and identify your say, or your name and address, please.
Good evening. I'm Shawna Packer, ten forty-four west, sixteen forty north. I just, I also support the council adding the exemption for children to utilize city property without having to have a permit. The city already allows commercial use of city property for adults who have business license and pay for a permit. As parents, we try to teach our children hard work and how to develop a successful business as it goes into so many aspects of their lives as they get to an adult. And, and nothing would prevent a child from getting a business license, health department cert. Getting a business license, health department certificate, bond, or paying the city for a permit, exclusive sales at a park, the exact problems the Utah Young Entrepreneur Act is meant to solve. So that's just, you know, my son, Liam, he's nine. He wants to sell lemonade. He can sell it at our house, but we live on a street that doesn't get much traffic. And so if he's able to set up at a park, he's able to have more success and he's able to work towards a goal he has of trying to earn a toy that he's interested in. And yeah, that's kind of, I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We now have a mayor and council announcements. Jennifer, would you start tonight?
The museum has reached over two thousand visitors already this year, which is well above last year. They only, they got about eighteen hundred. Heritage Days was amazing. It was a huge success, as always, Ms. Cresto, you're awesome. The parade was great. It was fun hanging out with you guys. And coming up is Cops and Dogs on the sixteenth. And that brings me to Chief Akken. Sir. We started off rocky, man, but we came pretty far. I'm very excited for your retirement and I wish you the best. And I'm proud of us for the things that we built in this last three and a half years. It's been crazy, but you've been a great guide and I appreciate you. And I wish you and Ms. Christie the best on your next adventure. That's all I got.
Jordan?
I want to echo the sentiment for Heritage Days. It went fantastic. I loved it all. It was very well organized. Kudos to the Park Track Department for all you guys do for our city. Echo also, Chief Akken, it has been a sincere pleasure. I know you always took the time to sit down and explain things to me because I don't know all the stuff it takes to, to run a police department. So you're, you're always willing to sit down and walk me through things. At Heritage Days, there were some events that occurred and Chief Akken was right there taking care of things. Phenomenal, we, it is our loss, but I hope you have a wonderful retirement and do amazing things with all the stuff you have planned, so thank you.
Paul?
I don't have any announcements, but I will echo. Heritage Days was awesome. Cresta, thank you to you and your department. And Chief, you will be sorely missed, but we, I certainly wish you well in your next adventure.
Julie?
Yes, I, I, I agree with all of that. Heritage Days was the best. I, I got a lot of good feedback about the fireworks. They were really super, the best ever. Nope, that's all I have.
Brett?
I join in what Spence said. We appreciate everything, Chief.
That brings it to me and Chief and I have already spoken and you will be sorely missed. And thank you, and I've publicized my comments about Heritage Days and gratefulness to the staff as well. With that, I will call for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.